You're just mad because you lost.
Yeah.
We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, November 5th to order. Rule call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
Maskey.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have the 2019 Small Cities Development Program pre-application, the 2019 Health Insurance Update, and the Flags of Honor Memorial Proposal Request. Was there anything else that was to be added to the agenda? Seeing that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of October 15th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of October 22nd, a resolution differring special assessments for senior citizens disabled or active military, a signed tax abatement to Fath Family Properties LLC, a resolution amending the credit card use policy, resolution adopting policy on finding 2017-003 for electronic funds transfer, a resolution to amend fund balance policy, resolution to amend the investment policy, a resolution to approve school resource officers agreement, a resolution to approve license agreement and re-appropriate funds for Celebrate the Light of the World Display, a resolution accepting professional services agreement with SRF for Robins Island Boardwalk, and for council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of August 28th, Human Rights Commission minutes of September 18th, and the Accounts Payable Report for October 11 through October 31, 2018.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I would like to pull aye for clarification and j for clarification, and I believe we had a request from the city attorney to change the wording on k.
K. With the exception of those three items, is there anything else that anybody would like to pull or discuss? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
I would like to do a vote for the resolution.
I'm sorry. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Next, councilmember Nelson on aye. Resolution to approve the school resource officers agreement.
I know that we had a conversation on the numbers. I just wondered if we could review the difference between the agreement this year and last year.
Chief Feld. Or Mr. Holland. Chief Feld.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As luck would have it, I was unable to find the one-year contract that we had last year, but I can give you the numbers that we had for 2014 through 2017, if that's helpful. The most recent contract there for 2016 and 17 was $150,000. Now, that was for three full-time school resource officers compared to the, what would be, three-and-three-quarter equivalent. That would be in the new contract proposal.
Okay. So, the three-and-three-quarters is the number that was settled between the school and the city, or that's what we're being requested, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I will make a motion to approve item a, resolution to approve the school resource officers agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Question I have is that those dollars haven't yet been approved by the council. The mayor had recommended that not to be approved, and I'd asked the council then to reconsider that, and that budget hasn't been approved yet. So, does this do anything as far as putting the cart in front of the horse? As far as the 2019 budget?
No, because in this agreement, it establishes a caveat that if we cannot fulfill it after this fiscal year, that we will give them notice. So, it doesn't obligate us for 2019.
Thank you. Rule call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is item j.
Okay. I was, I am supportive of the agreement and the reappropriation of the funds, but it did not say where the funds were coming from, and so I just was asking for clarification with where the funds were being transferred from.
Mr. Holland, do you have the answer? I know that when you and I talked last week after the meeting, you had recommended that those dollars come out of the funds from Robins Island.
From Robins Island, yes, Mayor, and that's the unexpended funds that were obligated for the legacy grant for the Four Seasons Building and the Trail. And then that grant became smaller, and so those funds were unexpended. And so, the finance officer recommended pulling those funds from that line item.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion for the approval of the license agreement and reappropriation.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And next, that resolution passes. Next is a resolution accepting professional services agreement with SRF for Robins Island Boardwalk.
I pulled that one because we had received an email from our city attorney that we needed to redo something, so.
Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify, my email was to staff, which is simply, if you approve a resolution entering into the contract, that staff should follow the city's template services contract. I don't think you need to change the wording on the resolution.
Okay. So, that's just recognizing your recommendation and clarification?
Correct.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
That motion is made in second to approve a resolution accepting the professional services agreement with SRF for Robins Island Boardwalk. Discussion. All in favor? A rule call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. I'd like to welcome the Candoy County SWAT students with us. I met with them before the meeting started. I had a nice discussion about how local government works, and thank you for being here tonight. I think there's about 10 or 11 of you there. So, thank you for being here. You can certainly feel free to stick through the entire meeting if you choose, or to choose to leave whenever you choose to do so. So, we have a fairly light agenda, so I would think we would be out of here before too late. But if you need to leave, you can just stand up and excuse yourself and just leave the meeting room. So, that covers the consent items and the items removed from consent. Next, we will have a first public hearing, which is an ordinance to rezone land from L Limited Industrial to General Business. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the planning commission has considered this rezoning at several different times. Initially, they'd looked at a single parcel. Then, the planning commission had looked at maybe trying to do some language changes, some text changes to accommodate the request. What they finally decided on was an expanded option for an entire corridor that would be converted to commercial zoning on former Highway 40 and along a portion of Highway 12. These are properties that are mixed-use right now, and by rezoning them to commercial, it expands the options for future use. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on October 3rd, and they approved the request, but they excluded the northwesterly most parcel and the easterly four parcels reflective of public comments that were received at that meeting. And the map that is in your packet is the one that would actually show the properties proposed for rezoning now. This has really developed into an issue. Daycare, which is the proposed use of the Pert property, has really grown an interest in this community. Everybody knows there's a large gap in our ability to provide for daycare services. So, by completing this rezoning, it would allow those services to be provided at that location. By increasing daycare services, more family members can be employed, and that has a positive net impact on the community. It's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's members of the public that wish to speak to this issue, this would be the time that you would want to speak. And so, this is on the Pert rezone, which I think some of you may be here to speak to. So, when you go to the podium, please state your name, and if you reside within the city of Wilmer or outside of the city of Wilmer. I believe this is the issue that you wish to speak with?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you just go to the podium and speak? State your name and whether you reside in Wilmer or outside of Wilmer.
Hi, my name is Abdurahin Hussein. A-B-D-I-R-H-I-N. I work ADC African Informants Center. This program called Daycare Center. As ADC, they come to us and they told us, you know, I mean, we have to open this business in Wilmer, and a lot of community in Wilmer, they looking for a daycare center. As a father, I have four kids. Sometimes, we don't have this daycare center in Wilmer. It's going to take time. Me and my wife, you know, I'm working full-time. My wife should get full-time school, and there's no daycare center in Wilmer. Then, you know, I mean, we, you know, I mean, approve a loan, ADC, SP a loan, $300,000 loan. They cannot find a space. Every space going to take time because they need more investing. They find the space in 19 Avenue, and that space going to be like costing like $190,000 to fix it. And now, they find the daycare also is here, and that also is here, and they find this building. And this building have a good space, 12,000 square feet. It's a good price, and it's a good locations. Then, you know, I mean, as a Wilmer community member, you know, I mean, this facility is a requirement for the community. They most of them, they work changeo. They work two shift. They don't have, you know, I mean, daycare center to live for the kids. A lot of moms also is here today. They always ask us, we need daycare center. Those guys who want to open daycare center, they are professional people. Some of them, the director here have 12 years experience leading daycare in Minneapolis. You know, I mean, as a loan officer at ADC, we just approve this loan because when they feel for the requirement for ADC, and I wish if you guys approve this today, it's going to be helpful to the community. And it's also more jobs and also daycare center for our kids. Not only Somali kids, but all kids in Wilmer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak to the issue? Come up and tell us your name, and if you reside within the city or outside of the city.
My name is Sinestra Hussein. I live in Wilmer, and I actually made Wilmer my residency here, and I bought a home here about a couple of months ago. Now, having a big daycare center here in Wilmer has been a big issue for me. I'm a nurse, and I cannot continue to work because it's been very difficult for me to actually find a daycare that will take my children because I have a child who has special need. And a lot of the daycares are very limited here, and a lot of daycares, you have to pre-register, and some of them are kind of like a family-based. So, a big daycare for everyone like this, I think it's needed in Wilmer. The other thing is, a lot of the Somali parents, some of them have to quit their jobs, especially like me. We have to quit the jobs because of the children. If they're under five, they cannot go to school full-time. There's not a lot of daycares that would take them. So, I hope you guys would approve for this facility for them.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak to the issue? Seeing in hearing, then I'll bring it to the council. I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it. Second.
Motion made in second to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. I would like to thank the Planning Development Services for your work on this. It took a lot of hard work to get this brought back to the table. You were creative in how you proposed doing this, and we thank you very much for bringing that back to us, and thank you to the council too for approving this. The need for childcare is ongoing within our community, and this will give us one more opportunity to provide childcare to our parents within our community so that people can continue to fill the jobs that we have within our community that are unfilled. So, thank you very much, and thank you to staff for all the work you did to make this happen. So, thank you very much. So, that does pass at this point. If you guys want to stick around, you certainly can, or if you want to leave, and you can do that too. We understand that everybody has busy lives. So, you're more than happy to stay if you choose to.
I go back to Minneapolis, it's raining.
Yes, exactly. When it rain, you want to be home. Right. Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Just want to say the last word. Thank you so much for that, bye. Thank you for your.
You bet. You bet. No problem. Next, we will take the Small Cities Development Program pre-application. Jill and Sarah. Oh, I didn't see the family back there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sarah and I would like to request your approval this evening to submit a pre-application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for their 2019 Small Cities Development Program. There's two activities we would be requesting funding for. The first is for a multifamily rehab project, specifically the Lakeview High Rise, and also a downtown project, beautification project that would complement some other activities, excuse me, that the city is working on. So, I guess we'll start with, Sarah will explain what's going on downtown.
Ms. Sedberg.
Pull up the map again. As we saw at the earlier session tonight, part of this request is $400,000 for downtown streetscape improvements. This would include bumpouts along Third, Fourth, and Fifth Streets at the intersections of Litchfield Avenue and Becker Avenue. This is a project that was proposed in the downtown master plan, these bumpouts, and it would also include some improvements of landscape and different smaller things like that along in our downtown.
The second activity, as we mentioned, would be rehab for the Lakeview High Rise. The next project we would like to work on there is doing some water intrusion mitigation at the building. We've had some windows where we have water coming in around the windows if there's a hard rain with some heavy winds. So, our anticipated project for that, in worst-case scenario, would be a $2 million project, and $350,000 would come from Small Cities, $350,000 from Minnesota Housing if awarded funding, and the rest would come from the HRA. Lakeview's an eight-story, 127-unit public housing project owned by the Candoy County HRA and is located at 307th Street Northwest. If funds were received by the city, then it would start probably next fall, the entire project. Applications are, pre-applications are due November 15th. If deed invites the city to submit a full application, that's due February 28th, and funding awards would be announced in June of 2019.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sedberg, maybe you can talk a little bit about some of the grants that we've already received for the downtown and improvements to the downtown. You mentioned that at the first meeting, but haven't mentioned that this one.
Yep, absolutely. So, part of these Small Cities Development Program grants require matching funds. And so, with a couple of projects planned, a lighting project by Wilmer Municipal Utilities, Main Street has been awarded from Minnesota Main Street, some funding for public art, as well as a project with the Wilmer Arts Council and Blue Cross Blue Shield for some benches around town. That totals about $500,000. So, that would be our matching funds for that $400,000 that we'd be asking for.
Thank you. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the request to submit a $750,000 Small Cities Development Program pre-application.
Second.
Is that correct?
Motion made in second. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for Jill. So, it's called a small-city grant?
Yes.
How long until we're a big city? Or doesn't it matter for this type of?
You have to hit 50,000 population.
How much?
50,000.
50. Okay. So, we got a few years to go.
Yep.
Fewer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned the lighting project through Public Works. Just for clarification, is that regardless of the status of the grant application, is the lighting project contingent on that? Or is the lighting project going to take place anyways?
The lighting project will take place regardless. The infrastructure that's downtown right now is put in around in about the 80s, and at this point, the infrastructure is obsolete. So, we're looking at some possibilities of replacing lights downtown that would go kind of match what else is around town and some of the other developments that have been taking place.
So, essentially, the money we spend there can count as our contribution towards the matching funds?
Correct. Yep. And that hasn't come before the council yet. It will. We're just working on getting some of those details and different things together before it is presented.
Okay. Thank you.
So, all in favor of the motion to approve the application for the 2019 Small Cities Development Program pre-application, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Next, thank you very much for your work. Jill, you know, as we talked earlier in the meeting too, and I should have brought that up, but the city of Wilmer was a recipient in 2018 of these funds in the amount of between 1.3 and 1.5 million dollars. So, coming back for this, thank you for bringing these opportunities in front of us. So, they're very, very much needed in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Appreciate that. Next, we have consideration of the bike share program. Ms. Ruink.
Oh, wow, we have a bike today. All right.
To not be orange, just sample. Good evening, Mayor Calvin, and members of the council. My name is Pam Ruink, and I'm here with several other members of the Wilmer Bikes Committee. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. We are asking that you approve the bike share program for our community. This includes committing the city's ownership and management of the program and directing staff to work with Colony on finalizing a purchase agreement this week to ensure a 2019 launch.
Okay. Thank you very much. We would propose an amendment to what you're asking to approve the city's participation in and ownership and management of a bike share program as proposed by Wilmer Bikes Committee and direct staff and the city attorney to negotiate the appropriate contracts with Calianni and Caris Health for consideration and approval by the council at an upcoming meeting. Would you be amicable to that?
In conversations with Colony, the company that we'd be working with for the bike share, they've afforded us a deadline extension through tonight if the council would motion and approve. The bikes that we're looking at are refurbished bikes from a bike share in Colorado that have less than 60 days' use. Most of them between zero and 10 days' use out on the racks, is our understanding. This is one that's been cleaned. It has not been refurbished, which would be auto paint, putting on fenders on the front and back, decals, as well as then decal-ing appropriately for the sponsorship that we would have. They have given us a deadline of the approval this evening, and then followed up with, they've requested a very short period as far as the agreement with Colony, with attorneys communicating as far as that user agreement or purchase agreement, excuse me. They have expressed that they have a limited number of these refurbished bikes available with a lot of communities interested in them. So, not my request. That is the deadline that they have given us.
Yeah. Our request is that we have, and I believe our city administrator and city attorney are prepared to enter those discussions tomorrow. I mean, they're not saying they're going to wait two weeks. I mean, we're going to get on it right away tomorrow, but we have some, I mean, the city attorney hasn't totally reviewed the contract. He has made his preliminary comments, but let me let the city attorney speak for himself. I won't speak for him. So, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have, our office has reviewed the short summary proposed contract for the sponsorship with Caris Health Systems. We've offered some preliminary comments. We're going to have some more suggested changes to that agreement, but we have not completed that work yet. I have not seen a draft of an actual purchase agreement with Colony. We would need to review that as well. We are prepared in both cases to move very quickly, and if drafts are forthcoming, we would hope to be able to turn those around in time for council approval on your meeting on the 19th, if that is acceptable to the proposers.
What I'm hearing is they want us to approve it tonight with the contingent that it be approved if you guys agree to that. Are you not amicable to that at this point?
If the council's comfortable delegating all that responsibility to us to work out the final language, certainly, I think you can make that decision. Ordinarily, I would prefer to have the final agreement come back to council for approval, but that is ultimately a council decision if you're comfortable with those terms.
I guess, counsel, it's going to be up to you what you want to do here. You've heard the request of the Wilmer Bikes Group and the urgency that Ms. Ruink has shared with us. So, Councilmember Osmas.
Can you just clarify, what would the difference be, say, for a new bike versus a repurposed one?
Certainly. Thank you. The new bikes from Colony, we have actually passed that deadline for the new bikes, but they are 1,500 per bike. deadline for the new bikes, but they are 1,500 per bike. These refurbished bikes with very little use that will be cleaned up, refurbished, and then ready for the, as requested by the community here, are $750 a bike. So.
Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor Mesky?
This will be for what we've talked about before. The investment that the city is being asked to put into this upfront, in my understanding, is most of these dollars are already secured by other funding sources. So truly, what's the risk of, to the city monetarily to, to have the law firm work that part out? I guess I'm wanting to see where, what's, what's the risk of allowing that to happen?
The only thing that I've been told, and this is in conversations over the last two weeks, is that we, we were extended an extra week to give the approval to hold those bikes. So the bikes, there are other cities that want the bikes, and for the 750 range, if we don't approve it tonight to give permission to move forward, they would probably go to the next people, is what they're saying. You know, we, we heard from our city administrator last week and his opinion. So.
Well, again, I understand that. I'm wanting to know, with basically no dollars going to that from the city at this time, we're being asked for dollars to maintain the program. What is the fear of, to the city, what's the cost of the city for allowing the law firm to move ahead with it, with the old agreements right now?
Mr. Scott, maybe you can help explain this a little clearer.
Yeah, to answer your question, Counselor Mesky, I don't believe there's a large monetary concern to the city upfront. It's simply a matter of best practice would be for the council to see the agreements it's approving. In this case, given the urgency that's been explained tonight, I'm comfortable having the council essentially pass a motion to authorize the purchase and to direct the city administrator and city attorney to negotiate the final language in the purchase agreement.
So moved. Second?
So we had one motion and second on the table.
Oh, my apologies.
So we should amend it to say what Robert just said, I believe.
I believe the amendment the council will need to make is to authorize the purchase of the bikes as proposed from Colony, subject to review of the purchase agreement by the city administrator and city attorney, and approval by the city administrator and city attorney.
Motion and seconded, are okay with that?
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
Well, the original motion was made by Julie and seconded.
No.
No.
I don't think there was one.
Ms. Thompson.
I'm sorry, I didn't have any motion on this subject. Nope. That was the last topic that Osmus made a motion. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a motion by Councilmember Schwantes, seconded by Nelson, for what the city attorney just said. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion? Roll call.
Counselor Ms. Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
No.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
That motion, resolution passes. Thank you. Next is consideration of proposed reduction of special assessments. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 2017, improvements were made on 16th Street Southwest as part of the street project number 1701. Street and other improvements included in improvements was the pouring of concrete apron on driveways. A property owner recently contacted our office and asked for a reduction in the amount assessed against their property for the cost of the apron, as their desire was not to pour that at this time, and they were planning to redo their entire driveway and pick up the cost on their own. City Engineers' Office visited the property and calculated the cost at $45 a square yard for a total reduction of $747. The staff's recommendation that council approve the resolution reducing the special assessment against said parcel by $747 as calculated by the City Engineers' Office.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the consideration of a proposed reduction of special assessments on a property on 16th Street Southwest. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselormember Alvarado.
Is there a timeline on that? Mr. Christensen?
What's your question?
Is there a timeline as to when it's supposed to be done?
I think they're waiting on this action, is what I was told.
Okay.
Correct?
But I mean, once, if this is approved, how long will they have to put it together? Put in the apron to match the rest of the street or whatever?
Right. At this time, Mr. Alvarado, we've not put a stipulation of any, of any kind on that property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
The homeowner talked to me and said as soon as this was approved that they would do it right away. I don't imagine they'll do it in the rain, but I think they'll do it right away.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselormember Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a discussion on improvements to the Flags of Honor Park for us. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is, as mentioned during the work session today, the Veterans Council, Veterans Central Council is proposing upgrades renovation to the memorial park. In short, they would replace the wood entrance sign with a granite sign. They would reduce the number of flags from 100 down to 50. They would remove the existing monument and replace that with a, with a different monument. If, if it was decided to keep that monument, they would put one on each side of the pathway leading up to the memorial, and they would create a plaza area with pavers that are, that are going to be sold to help pay for that upgrade. The granite feature, the benches would be involved. They could be sold as, as a potential for, for donors as well. They would create this plaza with granite. They would also feature emblems of all of the services that the United States has. Recommendation would be to approve the proposal, allowing the Veterans Council to proceed with the fundraising campaign for these improvements.
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the fundraising campaign for improvements at the Flags of Honor Park. Discussion. Counselor Ms. Mesky?
I have no discussion, but if, if anybody would want to see those designs, we did have them at the working session meeting, and those illustrations are there because it's a very beautiful design, and I think it'll be a highly functional park and a great improvement to the whole layout of the, of the Flags of Honor area. Or you may have them from the previous.
We'll, we'll get them here shortly, the way it's looking.
Find them here.
Right there, I think it should be.
No, that's not it. That's a lot less beautiful than the original.
No, they took it down. It's not up there any longer.
Yeah.
You could get into the work session minutes.
Work session minutes, or I mean, you can post to our website or something.
Corey, could you, Corey, could you grab that in, in this section of the agenda, just insert it when you get to that point? I think Corey can take care of that for us.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have discussion on 2019 insurance policy for city employees. Ms. Beckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have, as we discussed in our work session, we need to select a different alternate plan for the 2019 health insurance for the unions that voted against PEAP. An actuarial accountant calculated our aggregate value of our plans that we were offering compared to our plan that we offered in 2018, and we need to offer one per statute that is of the same aggregate value as what they currently have. I did retain a new bid for our 2018 plan that is through Blue Cross Blue Shield directly rather than through the co-op, and that is now the cheapest cost alternative for PEAP for 2019 while still being of the same aggregate value. So the recommendation to council would be to select Plan Number Four from the new alternates list to offer as an alternative to PEAP health insurance in 2019.
I know no one wants to make this motion, but we don't have a choice. We have to provide health insurance to our employees, and I know that it's a bitter pill to swallow, but I believe that this is something that we have to do if the council chooses not to do it. I'm not sure what our options are at this point. So, Mr. Scott?
Well, simply put, Mayor and members of the council, you do need to approve a plan to offer. The previous selection for the alternate plan was found by the city's consultant not to be of the same aggregate value of benefits. So you need to select one that does, and I believe there's one option on the table. So you do need to approve it.
Reluctant, so moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. I'm not going to give the same speech I gave for the work session, but to say that this council and the mayor are extremely disappointed is an understatement. I won't speak for council members, but I'll speak for myself. This is a day that we were hoping to prevent from happening. This is no reflection on your work or the city administrator's work, and we know it's difficult on your side because you're getting pushed on both sides. But understand that, that the mayor and council are not very happy tonight. So roll call.
Counselormember Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson? Christensen?
I want to pass.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, and one abstain.
That motion does pass. Counselormember Nelson?
I spoke at the work session regarding the 11th hour that we've been put in again this year, and I am going to make a motion to request that the timeline be reviewed and established with how we got where we are tonight. And I would like it to start from last year when this happened to when the labor meeting was, the closed labor meeting took place to provide the direction. I'd like to know when we sent out information for bids, what was communicated during the union negotiations, and when we received the bids, and all of the bids that were incorrect and correct, and the timeline that brought us up to tonight.
There's a motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. City Administrator comments?
Just for a point of clarification, you're, you're asking for a report by the next meeting?
Just asking for a report, is my understanding. Is that right, Ms. Counselor Nelson?
I don't know that it needs to be by the next meeting, but I do think we need to understand how we got where we are.
Right.
And what we need to do different in the future, because the information we received last year, we were not able to follow through on, and the information that we received this year has changed two or three times. That brought us tonight that we have no options. And so if it takes one meeting or two meetings, but I would like the documentation included with that.
Okay.
Mr. Holland, I think what the, what the issue is, is that, you know, what we heard is that, you know, last year, this cost the city residents of Wilmer between 150,000 and 500,000. And this action that we had to take tonight cost the city an additional 600,000.
If, if I could clarify, it didn't cost the city anything last year. What it cost you was the savings that I was proposing. That's what was lost. There was no money. I mean, there was, there was no $600,000 that was, you know, spent in, in the budget last year. Just like this year, we, we're going to spend about $400,000 more than we should have. Now, that's real money. But last year, that was a proposal that I was working on with the PEAP program, and it was just a savings option that I was trying to get through. The employees didn't want to go through with it, and then through our consultant and through our HR director and some other different things, that didn't pass in the timeline. But I just want a point of clarification. We didn't overspend money in last year's budget, if I could make that.
Correct. Yeah, I believe the council understands that.
Okay. I just have one thing tonight, and I was just, we have a work session scheduled for the 13th. The 12th is Veterans Day. So right now, we do not have anything scheduled on the 13th. So I'm looking at putting some items on there. I'll have to do that by Wednesday and get with the mayor. But is there any council members that will not be in attendance on the 13th or on the 19th due to the holidays or any other business matters?
I'll be gone.
On the 13th?
And I'll be back the 20th.
And the 19th. So you'll miss those two, okay? Anyone else? That's all I had tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. For the mayor, tomorrow is election day. You have a lot of opportunities to vote. We have the mayor's offices open, along with Ward Two, and actually, all the wards are open. There are only two contested races, the mayor's race and Ward Two race are the only contested races. But there are the state races and our county races, along with the Invest in Wilmer group, the local option sales tax question. So make sure you can get out tomorrow and exercise your right to vote. It is your right and also your civic responsibility to be an educated voter and to vote how you best feel people that will represent you. So we all look forward to the results of those elections tomorrow. So with that, I have nothing else. Counselormember Fagerly?
I was going to ask for permission to be gone, so you already know that.
You have permission.
Okay, thank you.
Counselormember Nelson?
I will pass, thank you.
Counselormember Christensen?
It's still snowing.
That's a good thing. Counselormember Schwantes?
Have a good evening.
Counselormember Alvarado?
I just want to remind people about one of the things that we have available to our, our community, and that's UHF. It's, it costs money to run that program, so if you're using that UHF, I would ask you to contribute to it. We got a, a thing in the paper, but you can also go online and contribute to it at www.uhftv.org. They're asking for $100. We're going into Veterans Day. I belong to an organization called Purple Hearts Reunited. If somebody out there has a purple heart that doesn't know where it belongs, what family it belongs to, you can get ahold of purpleheartsreunited.org, and they can help you find a home for that purple heart. Those purple hearts should be with the families for the service that that veteran provided. And I agree with what Mr. Mayor had to say about getting out and voting. It's important. I hope you consider investing in Wilmer positively. Thank you.
Counselormember Osmus?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, I just want to give a shout out to the city staff. I've been fielding a couple of complaints over the last couple of weeks about, I think people are wanting to clean up before the snow flies, and so just about trash in, in the people's yards or buildings that need to get tore down. And I see that those, some of those items have been addressed. I saw there was a garage that was been, an eyesore has been taken down, and a tent that was in somebody's front yard. And I just want to give a shout out to the city staff for staying on top of those things. And then the next thing is, I drove through Robins Island to see how the lights were going up today, and there's big poles up for the big Christmas trees, and it's looking good, and there's still plenty of opportunity to go out there and help set, get, help set that up and get some of the lights going. It looks like it's going to be fabulous.
Counselormember Mesky?
Yeah, I would, I would piggyback on those lights too, and also there's the road projects that we've had. We have a lot of them. Continued patience as we get to the end of that would be very much appreciated. Building projects going on everywhere. There's a lot of progress happening in the city of Wilmer, and there's a lot to be proud of. But please just let the workers finish up for the season. That'd be great. And yeah, I would also piggyback on that. Make sure you vote tomorrow. It's very important.
Counselormember Plowman?
Good segue. Yeah, I'll, I'll quadruple down on the, on the voting. I think that, you know, there's a lot going on in and around our community. A lot of progress has been made, but there's also a lot of people with a lot of ideas, thoughts, opinions, complaints, criticisms, and whatnot. I would say to those people, I'd encourage them, be active, get involved in this community, take part, do something to make a change. And at, at the very least, at the very least, if you are able to, go vote, because there are people that do want to put themselves forward and have been willing to step up and, and, you know, give their time, their efforts, their energy around town, and not only for that, but on a, on a council, and, or on a commission, or whatever the, wherever the office may be. But at the very least, you can do is, is get out and go vote amongst a whole bunch of other opportunities that exist. So please take that opportunity. We live in America, and that's a, that's a blessing for us. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd also just like to thank the Graves family for opening up Legacy on First today. It was a very nice event. A lot of you were there and had a nice ribbon cutting, and Blake gave a real nice. A lot of you were there and had a nice ribbon cutting, and Blake gave a real nice tribute of his dad, and also a nice heartfelt thank you to his mother for the leadership that she has provided to him along the way through this difficult time. And then on the, on the lights piece, I talked with Chad Kuzman last night, and as they were finishing last night putting the lights up, they flipped the lights on just for a little bit, just to see what they looked like, and they said the cars just started streaming through Robins Island, so. So I think that that will be a great location, I think it will be a very nice addition to our community. And Councilmember Christiansen, as you said at our last meeting, that will definitely bring people to Wilmer. So thank you all, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're, motion made and seconded, we adjourn.